Well, we'll call the meeting to order. You have your minutes in front of you. Actually, if you want to open this little prayer.
Sure. Dear heavenly Father and Lord Jesus, right now, we humbly come before you with a heart of thanks. For Lord Jesus, you have provided each and every one of us with the opportunity to help better our community. And I'd ask, Lord, that you would instill in us the perseverance and, Lord Jesus, just the intelligence and intellect to oversee the decisions for tonight. And I'd ask, Lord Jesus, that your hand would be involved in each and every decision and your will would be done. Thank you and praise you again for all of these opportunities. In your most precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now, if you want to review your minutes. No, no, we wanted to do executive session. It's the first thing we did, wasn't it?
That was the meeting before.
Already?
Mm-hmm. I had to think about that one. Well, I'd like to just swear him in the first meeting. And then I can do a great job the second.
There you go. I thought that's the case we didn't put it.
I made the motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second it.
Have a motion to approve the minutes is ready to second. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. I'd like to welcome J.C. to our meetings. Glad to have you.
Did Remy say she was going to cut down or not?
No. I'm going to get a report.
You are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Turn on the gender for me.
Yeah.
All right. Without further ado, want to come visit with us?
Sure.
Left you a chair.
All right. I guess it's appropriate for the first thing that I do is congratulate J.C. on becoming king of homecoming.
He's having a good year so far.
Absolutely. Well, he had an experience last weekend, didn't he? Yeah. J.C. went with me on the Fly Kansas tour.
Really?
So, he allowed me to take a nap all the way from Salina to Lincoln, Kansas. He flew the entire way.
With the tailwind?
Unfortunately, weather was really messed us up.
Yeah.
So, but we had a good time. We had a good time. I'd like to, first of all, say thank you for allowing me to come speak to y'all. And actually, what I'm really trying to do is help you in the city council. I'd like to express my thanks and appreciation for the very good work that I've seen done on cleaning up the streets. The spraying that's gone on, I think, has really been nice and effective. I'd also like to thank on the rewriting or review of the dog ordinance as well. With that, I'm here tonight to try to help in keeping the city safe and safely. So with that, my discussion here today, tonight, is actually, it has a good and a bad side to it. We'll cover the bad side first, and then we'll move on to the good side. I only have about four of these, so if you could share those. And, yeah, let's see, here's another.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. The issue that I have is, I think most of you are familiar with the property that I own on North Kentucky Avenue, 412 North Kentucky. Right south of me is a property which I screwed up on the address there. It's actually 406 North Kentucky. For quite some time, that particular property has remained unsightly, and I will say unsafe. The property due to open windows, I should say, in the foundation of that property, has become the home of several feral cats, skunks, and I don't know what else. And I've tried my darndest to get it cleaned up. I know that some work was done, and the owner of that property now chose, I think probably about two years ago, to put down, I call it particle board, or OSB, on that for decking. And we could see what was going to happen with that right away, even though they did put some waterproofing on it. That only lasts for a short period of time. And, you know, the property has continued to run downhill. Sort of a, I've got on the sheet that you have there, I've got three photographs. The first photograph is showing the east side of the property. And if you look at that photograph, there are two open holes in it on the east side. And that's where the feral cats and the skunks and everything else goes in and out. The next, if you turn yours over, I've got a couple of photographs that show the OSB, the deterioration of it, the holes that are in it and everything. If someone was to, I think if someone stepped on that in the wrong position, down they go. So, that's where it's at. Background on this, this whole thing started, I believe it was 2012, is the year that it started. And that's when Danny Hill purchased that property at an auction. He came in and moved the manufactured homes off of that property. And when I say he moved it, that's exactly what he did. He moved it and went on his way. In that process, he violated a city ordinance which I think should have been putting down, I think it's a $5,000 nonrefundable deposit on it to pay for any thing, any items that needed to be done. He walked off, did not pay that. In addition, he left all sorts of junk there on the property. And also, this foundation was completely open. There's a crawl space under it. It's probably about four to five foot deep. Had trash in it and everything else. Well, it became a magnet of school kids because they're walking down within a half a block of this place, and it was just a magnet for them. And they would come over there, and we can literally see them getting into it. The city took him to court, and he pled no contest to it, and was fined $1,000. He immediately declared bankruptcy, as far as I know, and walked away. And I don't think he ever did pay the fine. Do you know if he paid the fine?
Is it listed on the bankruptcy?
To my knowledge, it has not been paid.
That's what I figured.
But if he's listed on the bankruptcy, then it's, well, it depends, yes.
Right at that point in time, when he came to trial, also, I think before he came to trial, he actually signed a quitclaim deed over to the existing owner, who is Mark Fremerth, living in Salina, Kansas. In a process of trying to get this thing straightened up, I contacted Mark on October 19th of 2017, and requested that the two holes on the east side be covered to prevent animals from getting in there. He indicated that he would cover those two holes. However, as you can see in the photograph that I took, and I took this on October 2nd, those two holes are still there. I contacted him again on September 30th of this year, that was about a week ago, and requested that he close those two holes and repair the decking on this. Well, believe it or not, I think it was this last Saturday, after I had already prepared this, I was loaded for bear. Anyway, he came in last Saturday, I do believe, and did some stuff. Here's photographs of what he did. If you look at the first photograph, that's again from the east, looks like he did in fact cover the two holes so that no animals could get in or out. Now, whether or not he cleared animals that was in there out, I have no idea. You'll notice also, there about three-fourths of the way down, there's a sign, that's a no trespassing sign, that he's tacked up there. He's also included one on the other side as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, that was the two holes. And it looks like he's actually done a fairly decent job of covering them up. I won't say it's the most sightly thing in the world, but it is effective, I believe. The second photograph shows what I conclude to be at least an attempt to repair the decking. And so, as an end result, I do believe that he's made headway on it, and I think he's maybe trying, at least. I conclude, the repairs there is also OSB sheets that's laid down there. So now, I guess I've got a question for y'all. How long do you think those are going to last? In addition to that, the OSB, he just covered up the holes, really. The OSB is still there. It's, I would guess, rotten.
Well, I think so.
And if somebody, and if somebody gets on top of it, down they go unless they know exactly where the, what do you call those things? Joyce's?
Well, is there a joyce on it?
What is?
Yes.
Didn't have to be.
What is?
Well, it is still, to the best of my knowledge, it is still the crawl space that's under there.
Right.
And I think he's used, I believe it's two by six, or maybe it's two by eight, going across. He's got one that goes down. I'm sure the center, you'd have to, to do it, with two or three things under there to keep that up. And then just the OSB on it. He indicated when he did this that he was planning on putting a building there, but that has not happened.
Do you open to selling it?
He's indicated that he would like to sell it.
What's his price?
Well, I'll tell you, yeah. As of, I think it was October 1st, I sent him an instant message, and I told him that I offered to purchase the property. I said, I can solve this problem. Because if I purchased it in a short period of time, very similar to the property that I bought across from the school, I would go in there and properly remove that foundation and fix that eyesore. He has not responded one way or the other to me as to whether or not he would take my offer or not. And I feel that my offer is in fact confidential between him and me at present time, so I really can't say what I offered him. I will tell you this, it's not much.
Does he maintain the mowing, or do we do that?
As far as I know, I think that he's actually doing the mowing. Do you know if we've ever sent a letter to him?
Several this year.
Several?
I mean, all of his books. The last one was certified. It may not come back.
I see somebody come in there and do the mowing. It's not the city that actually does the mowing. I think that what happens is, he goes as long as he can. You send him a letter, and then he takes action. And it's just like when I called him, that was on September 30th. When I called him, he was actually in Wisconsin at that time. And I had, I had two phone calls to him. He didn't answer either one, which I can't blame him there. I've got a 951-551 number, which is California proper, you know, robot call number. So, I can't blame him for answering that. So I finally texted him, and he did get back in touch with me. So I believe he's getting my text. And anyway, that's background on this. I believe that right now, he's did what I asked him to do. However, I think the problem is still there.
It's still a hazard.
It's still a hazard. You know, unfortunately, like I say, we're within a half a block of the school kids walking and a no trespassing sign, you know how long that's going to last. You know, and if somebody gets up there on top of that thing and...
How many kids know what no trespassing means?
No, that's right. That's right. It's, that's just something else to investigate, right?
Have we contacted him concerning the structure, or just mowing?
No, since I've been here now.
Okay.
About the structure.
Dean, you're pretty well aware of the place that I'm talking about, though. And in fact, Terry went with me up there to look at it as well, here just the other day, so.
If I remember right, that property, it's been a few years back, but the sewer, we had a sewer problem.
Yes, we did.
And we blocked that off. Or did we? I know we had a problem there.
You had a problem. And I do remember you dug way down in the alley and everything, and there was like a cleanout clear back there by the alley that was overflowing.
Okay.
Remember that?
So I guess, to your knowledge, did we disconnect?
I do not know.
Service?
I do not know what happened there. I will say this, that when the, before they put that decking on there, and it was just a crawl space down there, I can tell you right now, I saw an open sewer line down there. So I don't know whether it was...
And it could have had a tap on it, and somebody took it off. I mean, but...
Okay.
I don't know. Well, I mean, I don't know. I'm just guessing, and...
I know...
Well, if Louis was here, he could sure tell us. But it, as I recall, we disconnected it. I could be wrong, but I don't know.
It doesn't appear to be, based on the outside visual, I'll tell you that.
There was, I believe, a couple that was living there about the time when that repair was done. A young couple.
If you're saying that, if you think the sewer is still connected and is open, you would smell sewer gas.
Well...
See, I think, I think when Louis was in there, I think they disconnected it at the alley, at the main.
If they did, that's where it'd be done.
I think that, yeah.
Yeah.
When they were at the main, like I say, I'm pretty sure they did.
And I don't have any knowledge of that.
Right, right.
All I can tell you is, when, you know, I saw an open sewer line inside of that crawl space, and that's...
Well, we can research that quick enough at a later time, but... So I guess, you've done a wonderful job of outlining the situation. At this point in time, do you want everybody to just stand fast and wait and see if he responds to your offer?
But it's been a week since he, that offer was made.
Okay.
I'd say give him another week, and if it hasn't occurred within that period of time...
Because I agree with everybody 100%. This is still a hazard, whether you threw a few more pieces on it or not.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
I can't believe he'd get up there and put those boards on there personally, but...
Well, he spent, he spent some money on that.
Well, you could probably see him if you were near there.
That's what I'm saying. If you just patch, that would be pretty, he's not a big man.
Well, even from the photos, you can tell that stuff is...
It's rotten.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it is. Well, anyway, that's, I wanted to report this to y'all, indicating the things that I have tried to do. And I think if the problem can be resolved by neighbors working together, I think that's the best way of doing it.
Yep.
If they cannot, then the thing needs to be brought to the attention of the city council.
Well, that's the route we'll go, is to wait just a little bit.
Yeah.
I don't know whether you might tell him, just let me know either way, so we know.
I told him I was coming to the city council, you know, with it.
In the meantime, we'll, we'll go ahead and double check that sewer.
Yeah.
Just to, in the outside chance that you do get a hold of it, then you would know what, where you're at with that.
Well, the first thing I would, you know, if that was to happen, I would work with Terry and make sure that it was capped, you know, if I was doing something.
Is the water meter up on the west part of the property?
Yes, it is. And the water meter is disconnected.
Right, right.
On it. The gas meter has been removed, to the best of my knowledge. So, that's that.
Okay.
And we can go from there. And if you want in the future, Dean, if you want to look at it, perhaps when there's...
I've actually looked in the, in the structure already.
Okay. Oh, you looked inside?
Yeah. When we had the cleanup day, I drove all that stuff that was in that lot to the front, too, that got picked up. And I was not having any luck with that order, fixing them themselves.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions for Red? Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you, and keep up the good work. Terry, you can have another copy.
All right. Well, we'll follow up on that. Milton, you're here. You want to visit with us?
I thought I'd come. I was watching a video last week.
Is that a yes or a no? You want to come visit with us? No?
I just, it rained, and I've been working on town, and I just come to the meeting.
Okay.
Come to the evening here.
Well, you're welcome.
I've been trying to make progress.
You're welcome to come visit if you want, otherwise, we're going to move on, so.
Go on.
All right. Thank you. All right. Are you the party to report on the library expansion update?
No, she is.
She is.
Yeah. They talk to me, they are, they have, the library board has agreed to hire Kirk Schultze and Jim Frederick. They're basic, Kirk's going to be the general contractor, and him and Jim are going to do the work. And then if they need somebody else, I mean, there's times they may, and then they're going to kind of oversee the whole project to make sure that, you know, what we need, when we need to have it, and...
Do you have to have a licensed and bonded contractor because of the grant?
Because of the grant?
We don't, no, we don't have to.
And no, no engineer?
Kirk. Kirk is the, yeah, he's the general. He's insured and bonded both.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. But Jim and Kirk are both insured and bonded.
So are you guys able to work this through without having to go through an engineer?
Mm-hmm.
Fantastic.
Crazy work.
Well, it's just less money spent.
30%.
Yes, that's, that'd be right. Because we looked at, you know, doing that whole, which way to go. I will say the interns were very helpful. Yeah.
Good.
I mean, a lot of what their work did, just like, kind of moved it that much.
Good.
So with all, with all that said, can you tell us where, kind of where you're at?
Well, we can start the, I think they said the 3rd of December.
Okay.
Before that, they were going to use kids to help load up the books. The question Remy had was that if she could store the books in the music building during the renovation.
The metal building.
Yeah, the only thing that's in it right now is display cases.
Right. And she was... I mean, she couldn't use some of those to set, they wouldn't all be on the, the books wouldn't be on the floor.
The shelves, yeah. So the concrete doesn't, or doesn't compensate.
How are you guys going to move boxes?
Yeah. The FFA and...
If you take a peek in that room, there's a lot of boxes.
I could talk to Mrs. Croftie about it. I don't know if she has, but like they said, the FFA...
My understanding, she has a plan that she's talked to somebody at the school about, that there will be school kids that will be spending like part of their day...
I was thinking, because we had a meeting...
See, that'd be a great community service.
We had a meeting two weeks ago, and I don't remember discussing that.
I don't know which group, but I do know she's talked with somebody at the school.
The K's and the FFA, I think, are the two that I'm aware of now.
Well, right there's about two thirds of the school.
Well, we're almost on that subject. Can you tell us what the, what the story is on the books in the round building? Is that stuff she's trying to get rid of yet?
Yeah, I think so. But I'm not, I don't, I'll have to visit with her. We didn't visit about any of that, so I'm not sure.
Well, reading I asked is because, you know, you're talking about moving books, and you're talking about having a lot of help. And in all honesty, I know there's been a little in and out with the stuff, but it's almost become a permanent fixture in there.
We'll have to work on it.
You know, asking what the, if you got a chance to have somebody help move them...
Or where she wants to go.
Are them eventually ever going to come back to the library?
Not to my knowledge. I think those are books...
She sells them by donation or whatever.
Right, by donation during the year.
Some, yeah. Some people bring other books and add to that pile, too.
I wish you hadn't said that.
But it's kind of like, well, exactly. That's what a lot of people have trouble with.
It's a book recycling program.
But, yeah, it is. It is a recycling program.
Well, I just thought of that.
And there were some other ideas that have been brought up about what to do with some of them, but she's, I know she's aware, but it's just timing, I think. But we'll make a bigger deal about getting it taken care of, so.
Anything else?
I think that was the main thing. She just wanted to, I mean, basically ask officially if that's okay, she wanted to be sure.
I don't see a problem with that. Anybody, council, have any questions? Nope. Okay. All right.
And then I'm going to slip in here because I got this from Kelly today, and the historic district information, and I know that she came, I don't know, six months ago, I'm trying to think exactly when, and the Lincoln Economic Development Foundation received a grant to conduct a survey of both downtown Lincoln and downtown Sylvan Grove, and to do research on the history of the community, along with an evaluation of the historic integrity of the overall district.
Basically, to see if we can qualify for a historic preservation, which puts you on a list. And if you have a stone building or a building downtown, then you have a better chance at getting a grant or monies to help fix up that building. That's what it boils down to.
So that's basically what we're talking about.
Yep, that's it. So they hired, the consultant they hired was Brenda Spencer, and she will hold a meeting in Sylvan and a meeting in Lincoln. The meeting in Sylvan will be Monday, next Monday, October 15th, at 7:00 P.M. here at City Hall. She was hoping that, that some of the council members, if not all, could come to that, as well as other community members. And just, it also, especially those that own property on Main Street, because she'll kind of give a discussion on how that will affect them and what, what that means, and the timeline and the benefits that they can receive from their, from that survey, so. But basically, I just want to let you know that, and let you know about that, so.
That same time is our fire meeting, Steve.
Do what?
The next Monday, yeah?
Yeah. Fire meeting's at 7:30. I don't know how long it'll last.
She's going to be in town, going to be taking pictures and stuff, and if...
But the, but the actual meeting, I don't think... But the, but the actual meeting, I don't think it's really intended to last for more than half an hour, so. It was supposed to be, or is it?
Here.
It was intended to be pretty good, at seven.
Seven o'clock.
All right, anything else on that then?
I think that's it.
Well, Dean, you wanna come?
Sure.
Update us.
Whether I should bring this up or not, but I'm gonna anyway, on the property south of, of Red's over there, if anyone recalls. You probably have some documentation on it, but when North Central Kansas planning was here, that was one of the properties that they put on their hit list, if you will. And to the best of my knowledge, when they were talking about demolitions and the grants, remember, I mean, there was some talk about, you know, ones that we got applications for and the ones that weren't, we didn't get applications for. And there was a line of thought, from what I recall, that the city might have to start some kind of a condemnation process on ones that would fall into that category but didn't comply, just a thought, I don't know if you all remember what, but I rode around with those gals that, that day. And that, that was one of the properties that they were not.
Question I have is whether or not it's considered a house, therefore.
It's an unsafe structure, I would say.
But they, I got the impression that it was, it had to be a house.
They couldn't do it.
Oh, for, no, but I think what they were saying is, I think that they were, they were wanting the, if the city to have to follow through with action of condemnation. I'm just saying that we're gonna be dealing with.
Can you condemn something like that, then, I guess, is that? You can't condemn a piece of concrete?
I'm just gonna bring this up, in two thousand and fifteen, and we had a hearing, the city council had a hearing, and they did condemn it as an unsafe and dangerous structure, enlisted the reasons why. I'm, I mean, you, I'm not sure, you can take that further, but at the end of the day, I believe that then would be something that would cost the city, and that they would try to have to get that back in Texas, is the only way that's really gonna happen unless the homeowner, I mean, you can put pressure, you can even the property, we can abate the property. But as we all know, that when we abate a nuisance of any kind, that's a cost to the city initially. So just understand that, yes, that's a process that can, it has been started, it can be finished. But that would be us going forth.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, even, of course, that being just a foundation, you know, the cost would be considerably less than an actual house. But the first thing comes to my mind, if Red is successful, then he hasn't owned it long enough. Isn't there some wordplay that comes into that?
Well, for the C P D, that.
That, that doesn't have an effect in regards to that, I, I, I don't think, I would say, no, it's not just, it's, it's just that I would, I would have to find out from Carol. I don't believe it's considered a residence that can be part of the grant.
Right, yeah, that's my point, yeah, I think she was specific on it can be part of the grant.
It can't be, because.
Makes too much money qualifying anyone.
No, on demolitions, it's not binding.
But I think that they were talking about, like, another one, for example, the old house up by the water tower, was not one that we received an application for demolition.
Right.
And their line of, the way I understood it was, that they were going, they would expect the city to proceed with places that should be condemned. If they didn't get in on, you know, that's what, that's how I understood that, from, from Carol and the department of the other gals, I mean, I, so.
I, I could be mistaken, but from what I, I mean, I talked to her, she was here today, we had a meeting today, that is one of those things, it, it has to be a residence. It can't be a shed or.
For grant money, for the grant.
Right, I just, yeah, I just wanted to be clear about that, so that, so then you're, so then you're back to, like I said, if you abate a nuisance, you know, you take it to that other process, your condemnation, you go through all that process. It would ultimately be on the city, then the city would have to try and recover that on the methods we have available to us. But not that you can't go through that process, I'm not saying the city doesn't have an interest in doing that, I think they do, but I'm just making sure that is clear.
Since you brought that up, are there?
I just wanted to bring it up so everybody was aware of it.
Yeah, I know, I mean, are there other properties that fall into that category, as the house or the water, that are not applied for?
As far as I know, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and, and again, I, that might have been one of those, I mean, if that was said when it was just you and I and her and the other gal or.
This part of it is a little bit new to me.
State gal was here, was that the Department of Commerce was here, or the Department of Transportation, or whoever it was?
No, I, I guess what I'm saying, just the aspect of them wanting us to actively pursue that, that part of it is a little bit.
Well, I mean, they're encouraging us, I, I just, I, there's.
Well, I guess.
Encouraging the city to continue those cleanup efforts by doing things.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think that's what I guess.
Think about, you're talking about like Ohio Street, and when they, like the gutters and the clearing and what they, you know, they kinda came back after the fact. And kinda told us or scolded us, I guess you will, right? That was part of what we should have been doing or should have had done, and I mean, obviously now it's done, that stuff's done, but. Forewarning, I guess, is all I'm saying, just got that impression.
And obviously, you know, we've always, it's always been our intention to remain proactive. But it's just like, if, is this, or any way this imperils our current standing?
I don't know, I'm not gonna, no, I'm not going to say that, I, I just, I'm just saying that, again, with, you know, part of doing what they, you know, what they feel like, you know, when you receive any of that money, you wanna continue those efforts.
Well, yeah, we, yeah, we all know that.
And to help the community, not just by demolition, but, so.
Because that's, that's one reason I thought they did us a huge disservice when they made the huge public announcement, is because there were a number of individuals that said to me, said, well, you got your grant, now we're good.
Well, they were under the impression that Jack was the hand.
Yes, sir.
Well, it kind of is.
You mentioned something, Jennifer, that I was kinda new to me. I have requested demolition of my, I'll refer to it, chicken coop.
Yes.
Now, since it is not a residence, does that stop the demolition?
Yes, that's, that, yeah, like I said, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, they.
A shattered garage.
It's specific to a residence.
It has to be a residence.
Unless you wanna take your house with it.
I'll offer rent for Richard to go.
But yeah, no, but that's, I just, that was, you know, I just wanted that to be.
Yeah, okay.
So if there is a house to come down, though, and there just happens to be a garage there, then that could be included, okay?
If, if a house is taken with, yeah.
Like the one up there on the water tower, I think it's a tiny house, it's partially there, yeah.
Not much left.
No.
So, yes, that, well, an example would be Melinda House property, and there's a structure behind it, and that will be included in that. But it's because of the resi, and you have to remember, the point of the house, the point of the grant is to get rid of housing that is not viable to live in. And to, and to, yes, and then to have viable housing for the community, so that's why that's specific to that.
I didn't mean to backtrack, I just wanted everybody to kinda, so it didn't get anybody else by off guard or whatever. Going back, we talked about last month, Mr. Wareman's in the audience right there, but they've met, he did what, he did what he was asked to do and more. And I know the last time I talked to him, the last week, there were four different vehicles on that lot that are in the works of being gone this month, so. Just so everybody is aware, where we are on that. There's some properties that, trying to plant wheat last week, but there's some properties that should have been mowed and didn't get mowed and the yard work should have been done and didn't get done, so we'll see where, what happens there.
Is, is your, is your mindset kinda, we're heading into the end of the season here?
We're heading into the season where the growth of things stops, so focus more on some of the, some of the shrubbery and trees and, and removal of some of that stuff that's over the alleys that are prone to this tree growing in the sewer lines issue that you guys are starting to deal with, they're starting to try to face.
And tomorrow, I will call the highway department and address.
The county shop?
The county shop, because it is knee high.
Because what?
Grass on the county shop.
And the noxious weed.
Well, they went in there that one time and, you know, really cleaned that north part up, that, that used to be worse than it is.
And I, yeah, that's.
It does need to be mowed.
Have not, since I've started, have had to contact them several times. And we felt like sending a letter was the right thing to do, we've always emailed or paid a phone call.
There's a tractor and a mower sitting there.
That's where that is, anyway.
We just got sent today, but I will call tomorrow.
And that, I'm not trying to spend too much time here if I can help it, so, but.
Any, any repercussions from the housing committee meeting?
So, yeah, to kinda follow up, I guess, with him, so we had a, the housing board had a meeting today, this morning. They had approved two, two applicants to move forward with bids, two others. So what happens if it's over thirty thousand, so twenty five thousand is what the, the grant will put into each one. There's also some weatherization, that if they qualify, income qualify for weatherization, that will pick up some of that cost. But basically, anybody that, the bigger figure people might be able to put in five thousand if the, you know, if they are receiving twenty five thousand. If it's over thirty thousand, we, the, we'll send a walk away letter, which means this is, this is the amount that's gonna have to be done to get it up to the state's level. And, and if that is more that they can come up with, then they, they can say, you know, we're gonna walk away from this and we're not gonna have this done. Otherwise, they have to send a letter of commitment sharing that they will pay the difference between the twenty five thousand and what the bid comes in. And so, and then there is one of those that is receiving a code enforcement letter, that because right now they are not in compliance, and they have to be. And there's, my understanding is about fifteen days, they have to be in compliance, and then if not, we will move forward with the next applicant, so. And so right now, that's four that, and have been, have had the inspections done, and will go out for, and hope to go out for bids, hoping that we can see something start in November. So, knowing that we have to complete three housing, complete three housing rehabilitation before we can do a demolition.
The compliance issues, are they undoable?
No, I've, I mean, they know, I've specifically what every issue is, I've been on the property with the homeowner at length. Specifically naming every single little thing, and I mean, everything that I felt was a non, was an issue of non-compliance. And, I mean, I'm not gonna hold their hands, I feel like I've been given plenty of time, and the housing board is there, final say, whether they can, I mean, they're, they're preventing the bid from even going out, right? But they're still giving her more time, and I understand that there's, you know. I feel bad for her in a way, because I mean, she has moved some rather large things that are, have, were very unsightly and problematic, and she's taken care of some of that. But, I mean, that was, from the beginning, it's been talked about.
You've had to be one hundred percent.
Well, it'd be a completely different story if it was something like, there's no way this can be done in fifteen days.
Right.
That's a completely different.
And I, I guess I wanna be clear, is, is this residence was one of the reasons we didn't receive the grant originally. So it's very important that house is known to them, and so it's very important that it is in compliance.
And even on the pre-appellation, this time around, Carol threw this one out, she did not turn it into state with that property included, she threw it out ahead of time.
So it's, it's very important.
So they're very rare. And that is also known to the owner.
As long as, I'd say, as long as everything's crystal clear to the property owner, and you've gone literally and pointed out every infraction, that's up to the homeowner now.
A Saturday and a couple of high school kids, I'm sure they, it's all doable, just, just a big dump truck or two and.
And we do have, right now, I believe, fourteen applicants for housing rehabilitation, so, you know, knowing there's for sure money for eight.
That includes the first four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. All right, that's great.
Cause we're talking about, I was curious, I suppose, but did some of the, were there any that are coming in under the max, is there any that are?
One.
Oh, wow, the rest are.
Yeah, but you have to understand, too, when, I was kind of surprised that when the state, they have a standard of twenty years, adding twenty years of life to that home.
Okay.
And so, that includes some things that maybe you or I would not, you know, citing, you know, things like that, that, I don't know. I guess that's makes sense, citing, but I just, I'm just trying to think of, there's some things in there that.
They're not gonna put their money into anything that might be in peril.
Right, so, I mean, you know, cracks in a foundation, all, every single thing, they, when they inspect the home, it's for every single thing.
From the foundation up.
Right, so it's like, I think I really need a roof, that's what's most important to me, but when the state comes in, it's, we're bringing everything up to that standard. So, most are gonna come into that, I would, after looking at that today, I realized that probably most are going to come into that, pretty close to the twenty, twenty five thousand, based on that, so.
Sounds good. Anything else?
I do not believe so.
I have nothing. She was talking about, me too. Meeting is adjourned, everybody out here. Unless anybody else has anything to say for me, so.
Thank you for your help.
Any movement at all of any of the vehicles that you have encountered, anything at all happen?
Uh, we have titles, those, that for, I mean, three of them could be.
Liquidated?
Taken care of at any time, that we fill the, fill the, I mean, we just have to take, I mean, we have titles for two of them, the tractors, there's no title, no title needed. And so basically, it's just a matter of when we want to do something, which then we can.
Well, hopefully here things slow down a little bit.
Okay, so.
All right.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, believe nobody will watch the game.
Yeah? You consider that you've already met that up, I guess?
That's pretty much the update, yeah, I mean, that, that was the, the housing board meeting, moving forward with bids, is basically the update for the grant.
A while back, after sheriff was hearing stuff, you know, we had talked about speed limits. Whether I can accurately tell if a truck's doing twenty or forty or fifty.
We know it's not, it's twenty from here to.
We know it's twenty, but, I'm saying, uh, obviously, that's a fair amount of money, but it was mentioned, we might look into a Department of Transportation grant, cause it would be helpful to enhance safety and.
Then I think the thing that I found interesting is, and I've got another one that I looked at, and I think both of them have a computer program, a chip that you take out, and it actually gives you traffic information, so it'll tell you how many people are driving over the speed limit. Which I find interesting, based on our conversation with sheriffs.
Given that aspect of it, all of a sudden, the dollar amount doesn't seem quite so unsightly or scary, because it's gonna give you a history that you'll be able to go back and say, hey, look.
Grab cameras.
Our unit tells us that, you know, X number of vehicles went by exceeding speed.
I mean, granted, you're, I mean, there, there's nothing that's, there's no income gonna be made off of that, the point is that it's safety and that.
It's something you could take to like Lincoln County Police where there must be patrol.
Sheriff's department paying them to do a job.
And they say, well, we haven't seen anybody, well, here's a document, take.
We've had that discussion, and it tells us that there was sixty cars speeding in the last month through here, and we've requested a little more.
That's pretty cool.
Enforcement.
I saw that.
And, and I meant just for, I guess, for, I know, when he was here in June, they said in six years, they have not written a speeding ticket on, in Sylvan, was my understanding, is that what he said? But he basically, he felt like there, there really weren't people speeding, that's the way I took it.
That's what I was trying to say. There's not that much that goes on.
It doesn't say like the peak time for speeders is ten.
Right, no camera, but.
I was gonna say.
But basically, just whether or not, you know, how many cars have gone through, and then how many of those.
Break out one of our famous breaker box cameras and put it on.
Right.
Cause it records time. Know right when it was.
Right. So, um, I, I would think that people would slow down just. I mean, I'm sure everybody that, when you see that sign flash forty, you're like, oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah.
And that was, that was for two of them?
That's two of them.
Six, yeah, approximately six.
Does it say on there what, what an individual one would be, just so you know?
Two ninety-nine, two, two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Okay.
Three.
Yeah.
So, basically five hundred dollars less if you buy two.
Right.
Right.
Which is twenty percent off.
But then you get the software and it, I mean, that's what's kinda, I mean, it's, I'm sure somewhere it's included in that.
Just because we had discussion, this came across and I thought.
Well.
I'd look at a couple with it once, so.
If the council would like, we could have Jennifer look into a grant. See if anything's available.
Right. Would you look DOT?
Yeah, there's a, I mean, there's a lot of different stuff in regards to Department of Transportation and KDA and, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of options. I don't know if that fits, but.
Red?
Yeah, I just have, have a question. Thought came to my mind on this particular topic. I understand what your, your thinking process is, however.
That's what we pay.
My question is, how many accidents have there been, let's say, on Main Street in the last six years?
Kenny's is, and his building.
Four that I know of for sure.
That always did six months.
Me and Drake and Drake and Kenny's.
I was gonna say, in two years.
In eight years.
Well, the old fire station.
Yep.
It was ran into.
Yep.
Oh.
I mean, if anything, we're not talking.
Those were parking issues, I think he was saying.
They're all, well, everything I could think of is literally parking issues. As far as traffic violations.
There's been things where like, let's say the bank got run into.
Oh, no, that's right.
You know, uh, and stuff like that. I'm speaking of, you know, two cars going down the street or something.
Somebody pulling out.
Getting hit on the, in the crosswalk or.
How many accidents have there been in the last six years? Also.
Not a whole lot.
The other question is, I'd like to hear a good reason that the council would want to do that. There should be a good reason.
I will tell you the reason I brought it up specifically for me. Every Tuesday and Wednesday, the library is open. And I watch people with their small children and toddlers and sometimes three or four children. And I, and, and then a truck and many, and traffic goes by at a high speed. And I don't ever want to see one of them hit. It makes me nervous every Tuesday and Wednesday because of the library and the, and the children. Besides that, also, when those kids come down from the school.
Yeah.
To the library on their bikes, et cetera. I do know last week, uh, somebody what, ran into, um, a biker. So, I was a kid.
You know, rather than have this, I'm taking this.
But that would be, mine is just making people aware because it's safety.
I'm taking this Tuesday thing, uh, particularly, rather than do that because that right there really does not have much of an impact for a stranger driving through Main Street.
I don't know.
Something that would have a better influence, warning people, would be on Tuesdays. You've seen these plastic things you can put out in the street of a school kid or something like that. I think that that would, on Tuesdays, would slow that process down and you could fiction it off.
But you've read, we have to remember, this is a, this is a.
State highway.
This isn't a street, this is a highway.
I understand that.
But you couldn't put anything in the middle of the street.
Yeah, you can't put anything on the highway.
I do know that. But, I mean, but you're, what you're saying, you could put it on the sidewalk, but I don't know if that would be visible.
You understand where I'm.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Cost wise, absolutely.
It's, uh.
The other issue though, Red, is I don't know if you've ever experienced like when you go down into Ellsworth.
Yes.
Downtown, right there, about where the tennis courts are going around that curb.
Oh, yeah.
Every once in a while, they throw that trailer up there that.
I, I've gotten a ticket.
So.
Doesn't do you any good.
Rather than just get an accounting, uh, counting of the people that violated, give them a ticket.
Well, this goes back to our conversation with, with our law enforcement. We were summarily dismissed that we didn't really know how fast them trucks were going. And, and the trucks are my, Jennifer has a very valid point with the kids.
Yes.
But in my house, or in front of my house, a truck goes by, I darn sure know well enough if he's doing twenty or if he's doing considerably more. And I was told, well, the truck is so big, it just seems he's going fast. Well, I've driven trucks all my life. I've got a pretty good idea how fast. I can tell you almost to the day when, uh, co-op starts shipping grain out of Hunter. Cause then the trucks start. And it just, like I say, it's, it's scary sometimes. So, all of those things culminate in trying to do something because our, after having visited with law enforcement, they said they don't think there's an issue.
Uh, which leads me to the next question here, because I don't know this. Does the city of Sylvan Grove have a contract with the county of Lincoln for law enforcement?
Yes.
Sort of.
Pay him this amount of money. Every month, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Used to be the head of city cop.
Um, I would say, have, have you ever thought about having, uh, the county sheriff perhaps do some patrolling here on Main Street?
Put the contract, that's what it's for.
Yeah, we have.
They come over, they put their, they come over and put their time in the morning.
They, they have not written any tickets in six years. They are here, they are here every day. They are here in the morning and they are here in the afternoon when the kids are on the way to school.
School.
Yeah.
That's related to the.
And, and primarily they're patrolling schools, but they're also on Main.
Right. But what I'm saying to you is, they have never written a ticket regardless of a traffic violation, is what was said to us in June. Now, I believe they have written a ticket, but for speeding on Main Street.
So, then I was, if I put myself in y'all's position, I'd say, you want that device so that you can gather the information to report to Lincoln to say, you're following, you know what, get out here and do your job and, uh.
And, and I will, I will give a defense of our, our county law enforcement. They have a large county.
Yeah.
And they have one officer that patrols the entire county. So, I want to be clear, I'm not trying to, to diss on the county, Lincoln County Highway, I mean, the, the police department.
But there is, there's, there is the outside chance in addition to collecting data that we also might discourage somebody from speeding down Main Street, you know?
That information's at twenty-five percent.
At Lucas.
You what?
At Lucas, they had similar problem to this. And so, they came over from Russell and, I think they gave, one of them was a school bus. I heard they gave a one or two mile an hour over the speed limit and they, they came over and gave some tickets and they said, okay, no, we don't want you anymore.
I think, I mean, that's.
That's true.
I mean. I think a more effective thing, or at least it's been effective with me, is, um, oh, shoot. That's what happens when you get old. Uh, right north of you, who lives there?
Les?
Les. Les Walters.
Yeah.
Has that black silhouette.
Yeah.
Of a person there. That is more effective for me. When I see that, I say, oh, move, slow down.
What is it, Headsville? Didn't Headsville used to have a police car? Uh, plywood police car out there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could just, we could just have Darren bring another cop car down here.
I've seen all kinds of things like cop cars with mannequins in them and.
He probably has one for rent.
What?
We could put on the signs that there's video surveillance, people wouldn't know the difference.
Truth to advertising.
Camera on there.
Exactly.
Hey, what, what's the Tuesday thing?
I do.
I don't, I mean, I gotta record it.
Early in your conversation, you said something about Tuesday thing. What, what am I missing?
That's library.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay, okay.
And Fridays, Friday afternoon.
I feel it would be to our best interest to be proactive than reactive.
Well, you're pointing out some things and I agree with that.
I don't know if you remember here, last year, we had a high-speed chase went through here.
Oh, yeah.
We had a high-speed chase through here.
In fact, it was a year ago, it was a year ago because I had the seed wheat grain cart behind my pickup. I saw them guys make the corner at the, at the river. And I realized, uh, what was going on and I thought, you know, I could turn out in front of him there and slow him down. I thought, no, my luck, he'd probably shoot off and hit my house or something. He was definitely doing more than twenty.
Well, they just had one.
Yeah, about three weeks ago.
Anyway.
Right down Main Street.
That and J turns. I don't know how many J turns I see in town. It just, front of the bank. Well, instead of going around.
It's when you cross the double yellow line.
When you just make a right back into a diagonal parking.
It'll eventually be a complete U turn when you, when you back out and go north.
Do you mean the story and you just whip it in there and meet?
Is people making improper U turns.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Need to do it, you know, left-hand side.
And everybody wants to pull over to the right hand, wait for the traffic to pass and then pull out.
Exactly.
And that's not what you're supposed to do.
Seriously, you wouldn't believe how many J turns I see in town going through the bank.
You know what I do?
Yeah, yeah.
Right in front of them.
Yeah, if, again, it's safety.
And you don't save that much time, actually.
Where'd that flyer get to?
Which flyer for what?
The.
For the song.
Oh, it's back to me.
Okay, good enough. All right. Anything else on that? You got anything else?
No, just, um, I think that's all I have, other than.
You wanna read Terry's report?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I do have that, thank you. Okay, Terry, um, is on vacation. Uh, Deep Creek will be water jetting the west one-third of town beginning October fifteenth and sixteenth. Um, those sewer mains, and that should catch us up to our regular maintenance schedule. And, and Viraline will be doing the lift station repair work sometime in late October, kind of tentatively planning the twenty-second. Um, and then the water service line was replaced, the meter yoke and valve at one oh nine Pennsylvania due to a, uh, a leak on the, on the yoke below the valve. Um, also, I guess, oh. It has been an issue for a long time, the, uh, at the Sailbarn and Heather Myers residence that, that basically two, two places were on one meter. Sort of, like, I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't say that. If you turned off one, it turned off the other one. I think there were actually two meters. Anyway, he redid, replumbed it to where each one has their own shut off.
Each of them are meter.
Yeah. I mean, I think they each had a meter. I'm not sure exactly how that worked, but I didn't see it.
The wiring.
Right, yeah. Plumb, anyway. So, well, he did fix that. They had a water leak there and so at that time, he went ahead and fixed that issue. Um, Kenny's been mowing, mowing, lawn mowing. And, uh, Larry and Terry have been working on grading and repairing the streets.
How's the, uh?
They're moving too.
How's the moving going?
Good. If, I would love for y'all to take a walk back there before you leave because it's, uh, it's impressive. And, um, we found a lot of treasures and, and the dumpster had, was full last Thursday.
Treasures or not treasure?
Um, right.
Trash treasures.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, a lot of stuff was just removed. Um, and a lot of stuff went over to the next door building, so. And one of the next steps, I think, is, is to wire in, um, two-twenty for the welder and the.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
That's kind of our next step. And then, like I said, if you look back there, basically, it's just kind of, there's not a lot that has to go.
Did they find anything out on the grader? They were gonna try and adjust that.
They did adjust it cause I'm, I was, that is, I'm trying to think if they used it after they adjusted it, but I don't remember, but I know they worked on it.
Okay.
So.
Seriously, folks, at some point, and I realize this was not the year to do it. We bought a building, we paid a water loan off early and all this. But at some point, we've, you know, we've, we've done a good job of updating and maintaining our line of equipment, you know, we've replaced tractors and stuff, but our motor grader, uh, is archaic. And it, we really need to, at some point, be thinking about replacing it. Uh, I think if we do it, you know, on our timetable as opposed to wait until it blows up, we can find something considerably newer. It's still gonna be old. But it'd be newer by this standard and stuff. And because in all honesty, uh, this thing here, it's, takes two men and a boy to run it. So, that's what we were talking about. They were trying to adjust one side of the drive and it's, you know, we can either put a ton of money in that old machine and fight with it, or we can start looking around for something a little bit newer. So, just FYI. So.
Did you get any more quotes as far as you were talking about the lining on the sewer lines?
No, I actually, surprisingly, I have really not had anybody get back to me, uh, which I'm kind of surprised. And, and I haven't really spent a lot of time pursuing it. But, I mean, I've put in a lot of calls and emails and, um, right now, I don't have anything new. Um, but again, I feel like the one thing I'm gonna have to do is probably, the hurdle is, is look at some funding for that. So, um, before I pursue it too hard.
Well, that, that probably sound like a broken record, but even if council members want to get with Terry and get some of the stuff to flush down the sewers and tell your neighbors.
Oh.
Tell your friends.
Well, that's what I wondered.
We can help ourselves.
Right. But that's what I wondered if I, how could it be wrong to put it out there on the sign that says, stop in and get your.
She might be overwhelmed.
I honestly personally feel like there's better to have him go. I mean, he's given it to a lot of people. I've had some people come in and get it. I mean, I can, I can.
I'm just saying word of mouth would help in that.
Right.
Well, I have been telling people to stop by and.
The city, we actually have stuff to flush down.
The packet. He has an individual packet.
To help with the, uh, trees. Like I say, it, it can't but help.
Right.
It may not cure the old problems, but it, it's something that we can do. It's easy to do.
So, how often are they saying, yeah?
I don't, I don't.
Is there, is there, did you get one of the little?
I haven't gotten any of it yet, but I'm just asking, cause I've had people ask me, I mean, you do this once a month or do you do this?
That's honestly probably a Terry thing. I don't know.
And I think this concern with it too is that, is too many people do it at once.
Yeah, you don't wanna hit it too hard, you'll kill the algae. Well, I mean, you won't.
You'll upset the balance of the.
There's a concern with that. Like I said, you wouldn't want everybody in town dumping it down at the same time.
Everybody.
But Terry knows where the problem, where the chronic lines are. And I've told him, at least concentrate on those areas. And going back to what Dean said, we've talked about this before, you start walking up and down the alleys. There's unwanted shrubbery, it's wild.
Well, if we have another workday or something, I, I mean, and we just clean the alleys. And what was that for?
Well, if you want a twenty-foot right away, I know. I mean, just on, just on Jackie and I's block, you're probably gonna remove thirty, probably about thirty trees.
That's what I said. Do it one block at a time or?
It's, like I say, uh, this summer, I've had occasion to walk around some of the alleys and it's scary. Stuff that just, it wasn't planned, it just.
Yeah, it's voluntary, so.
Yes, sir.
Oh, y'all know me by now.
If we didn't, we'd do it now.
I've got a little saying about that. You want the alleys clean, maintain them.
Well, I think there's a lot of people that didn't realize that was, they, they say it's the cities and they shouldn't have to.
Well, I've heard that the, the council here make the comment, we do not maintain the alley.
That's been the policy for a long.
Been the policy and I, what I'm saying is.
We need to change it.
If you want them, if you want the alleys clean, maintain them. It doesn't take that much.
It really doesn't, once you get started.
You, you take a grader, maybe your replacement grader, and go down through the alleys, you know? Once every quarter, once every six months. And that's a start right there.
Well, on the south end of my street would be a real sore.
They're not gravel, you can take a grader down.
I drove around the city and from what I can see, I think I discovered that there was two alleys that you could not get down. Uh, one of them is right behind the county building between there and the mortuary. Uh, one of them is right behind the county building between there and the mortuary. And the other one is, oh, up near Halbert's, I, I believe, there's one there that's, that's, uh, not really visible. The rest of them, uh, as far as, from what I've seen, I think you can drop, actually literally drive a fire truck right down.
Well, I was gonna say, when I visit with people, I tell them why one, one incentive might be, if your house is on fire, we might want to put a big fire truck back there, and if we can't get back there.
If you can't get back there, your house could.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not just saying, you know.
What I'm saying, uh, when I, I could drive up the north end of town and look straight down the alley on a lot of them, and, uh, you know, you can get down those alleys. And all I'm saying is, you know, if you want them clean, maintain the alley, it doesn't take that much.
Is that the end of Terry's report? All right. Got anything, Will?
I don't know if it's just around, like, where they put the fence up on the basketball court, but there's a lot of stickers in the park, I don't know if it's just there or if it's like all around, but.
When you say sticker, do you mean sandburrs or the kind you throw at somebody's back? When you're a kid.
I guess you mean, I don't know.
I guess I shouldn't have said that.
Not sandburrs, like, the ones, the grassy ones that.
Yeah, skip out like this?
Yeah.
Tomahawks.
Yeah. So he might get their spray.
He knows what I'm talking about.
Amen, amen.
I think we've all had that experience.
Don't give these kids any ideas.
He probably can spray around.
I assume, yeah, yeah.
Or spray, and teacher's chair, too.
Is it, is it like an area where they can't get with the mower, or the weed eater?
No, I think they would go to a weed eater, I mean, 'cause the concrete sticks out, you know, that far from where the, the posts are that he put in there, so, I mean, there shouldn't be any problem there here.
Okay.
I think it's probably just grew up and maybe did that dirt work around.
Yeah, I wonder if we bring fresh dirt in here.
Yeah.
And that's Will's second home.
Ryan, you got anything?
I'll tell Terry.
You got anything? Ryan? Too many Ryans.
He used to be Dean's.
Yeah. Rhonda?
I can't think of anything.
J.C.?
Well, thinking of the basketball court, the chain on the rim is broken, I know.
Yeah, I put a new net on there and a new chain, and I, I don't think kids are messing with it, I think it just gets wore out.
Right.
If, if you can find a heavier one.
I don't know what would work, but.
I thought a chain would work, that's why.
Quarter-inch link or something.
I mean, it wasn't a real heavy chain, but.
Is that one, do that, can you buy, is, it's like, basically you're buying a basketball net, but it's made out of chain?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's usually for like, outdoor use, yeah.
Fifteen?
Yeah, something like that.
Oh, they said fifty.
Yeah, no, 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 ten or fifteen, depending on.
Got so many basketballs going through there or wearing a chain on it?
Probably just me, I mean, so, as long as kids go up there and play.
You're not that good a shot, Will.
See, when I thought the chain, I thought.
Will crawls up the net, like, don't get.
Practice is in there, Georgia.
Oh, they little grass and stuff, you know, without, I don't know whether the chain would work, 'cause, I don't know.
Well, we'll check on the basketball.
At this point in the year, I don't know that it makes sense to necessarily do it, it's getting to be winter time and stuff, but.
Anything else? Uh, I did offer you an opportunity to speak. Do you have anything you want to say?
Do you have a question to about?
I don't think so.
Okay. Nothing? Not even a comment about how quickly we've, we've progressed?
I'm very impressed. I am impressed I got gravel on my road, even though now it's a mud.
Well.
It'll get there. It will.
I'm delighted too, and I, I, you know, have been a little frustrated, but I, you know, we realize we're still in a state of flux, a state of transition, Terry's still getting acclimated, you know? It's been a year, but you're not gonna learn at all in a year.
No, no.
And, uh, overall, I'm, I'm very pleased with the overall picture, the way things have worked. Anything else, not, financials?
Yes, any question, I, I know that, um, I failed to, I'm pretty sure the warrant list you have. Well, the gas, there's several bills that I don't have yet, I'll put it that way, but they're listed, but I don't have the, the quarterly lab bill and quarterly lab, um, fees, anyway, there's a few of them on there.
Where are you at?
Oh, like I said, on the backside, there's a lot of the quarterly ones I don't have. Uh, there's a question on, on the KDAC water fees, it's based on our usage, um, there was a miss, a, a large misread, so I need to make it adjustable with Terry before I finish that report and have a price, but it's usually
To our, in our favor? In our favor?
Yes, it's, it's, if you look at the computer, what it says, it's a lot more than what it actually is, so. Than just a type O, basically. Anyhow, but I just, I guess if there's not any questions on that, I don't think there's anything abnormal with the mix of the stuff, isn't there?
Before we get too far along, maybe we want to talk a little bit about our garbage issue that we're talking about.
Oh, yes.
Uh, I don't know, if you want to give us particulars, we're actually running that a, so much.
Right now, we pay, um, we pay the county, the county refuse department fifteen dollars and eighty cents for each trash cus, residential cap, crap, residential trash customer, and we charge them fifteen dollars and sixty cents. So one of the things the auditor mentioned is that twenty cents, um, difference in terms of what we, because it's not, it's not even our service, it's not, I mean, it's, it's paid for through the city, but it's not a city service, and, um, some.
But on the other hand.
Right.
We're working at a loss.
We're working at a loss, plus, in essence, Jennifer, you know, we're not getting compensated, the city for the time she spends for the accounting.
Yeah.
So, probably not do anything tonight, but keep that minor in the ensuing month, we'll talk about what might be a reasonable rate hike.
Potential price hike, yeah.
As I said, if you just go, if you go up a dollar, I mean, you're covering it plus. But, I don't know, that's, yeah, that's something you have to think about.
Well, my thought is, you already got a twenty, twenty-cent deficit, it ought to be worth twenty-five cents per account at least for you to have to handle it, because I, if I remember right, we've, and, and those of you that are new, some years ago, the provider was, uh, raising the rates rather.
Rapidly.
Rapidly.
Rapidly and often. And we, we called them on it at one time. They actually came and visited, the county commissioner came with them. And there was one rate hike that they passed along that council agreed to, we ate it. And, but we're not in that position anymore that we can continue to do that. And thankfully, we haven't had one for a while, but never say never. Uh, so in all honesty, twenty cents to get even twenty-five cents to, throw her a bone for what she does on that billing and stuff, all of a sudden, your dollar isn't. You know, basically, we're patting ourselves waiting for the next one, so.
Right, exactly.
Exactly, but it's not gonna be so much that people are gonna go, oh, man.
Well, the frustrating part, the way that's set up, uh, you know, we have, I, I'll say we have no say-so, now, that's not true. We have a say-so, and, and at one time, we even looked at changing providers. And that got their attention real quick. Uh, anyway, it's, it's a bit of a ongoing concern, but like I say, you guys might keep that in mind, so. Yes, sir.
Steve, remember, you've got a monopoly.
Yeah.
You have recently, just within this past year, changed the rates to where if you have a water bill, you have to have trash.
Right.
So that's already in place. You've got a monopoly, you can set that price even higher.
Well.
Rather than a buck raised, you know, I don't know, make it five bucks, make it ten bucks. You've got a monopoly.
I know, I know we do, but we've always tried to protect our citizens now.
Yeah, you can pay for that new road grader, do the alleys.
And that's not, I don't think, out of line.
No, it isn't.
I mean, really, but.
Okay.
Say what you think, Sam?
I just.
Along with that, we need bulletproof glass, so.
Now, he's.
Maybe out here.
I just want to be clear, though, that is, that is from the county, that is not from us. And so we are just collecting what we are charged from the county. I mean, I just want to be clear, it's not our monopoly at all.
But it was the council here that created the monopoly, saying if you have water service, you have to pay for trash service. That's a monopoly.
Really? Well, can you get water service somewhere else?
No, you cannot.
That's a service that the city provides there.
You can get it from your own well, in fact.
I'm just saying that it's a service, and part of that service is the offering of trash service. There, because the people that we get the trash service from do not go tell, tell me exactly who does and who does not have trash, there is no way from, I'm not going, I mean, maybe I could, you know, we could add that to my list of duties, that I could go through every Thursday morning and see who does and who does not have trash, but that's not realistic. So therefore, instead of me going out there every morning, every Thursday morning, and checking to see who has trash and who doesn't, if you have water service, you have trash service, 'cause they'll just pick up anybody that has it out. That's the reason for that policy that the council decided upon. I just want that to be clear, if not a monopoly, it's about effectiveness.
The real, the real monopoly is with the provider. Now granted, there's some other people utilizing someone else, but that gets them to a whole nother.
Well, if you're gonna go that direction, all the utilities are a monopoly then.
Well, they are, absolutely, sure.
And that monopoly is beyond our control.
Absolutely.
It's because we provide safe water service from the federal down to the state, and those regulations aren't put in place, and that's the reason it's provided that way.
Yeah.
Just like if you're on rural water, it's also regulated by the government on a higher level.
My thought process here is, you know, why so, why go to a dollar? You're gonna raise it, make it five dollars, or something like that, um, that can hopefully last a while, buy your grader for you, and, uh, move on.
Booted.
I'd like to say you guys give us some thought between now and next month, and we'll, we're trying to have a little more solid information. Any other FYIs like that?
Probably, if you want to do this street sewer thing, it's who's supposed to be doing. Your, your committees.
Rhonda?
Just saying, it's gonna have to happen.
Well, I don't know how to. You're talking about the assigned responsibility?
Yeah.
It's a group effort, I guess it's a group effort.
It is, we have never, at least as long as I've been here.
Right.
We have never really called on someone and said, "What are you doing about the streets?" I mean, we, we, we tackle it en masse.
As a group.
I, I don't know that that maybe isn't outdated, it's just, it's been protocol to have that there. Like I say, in the years I've been here, I mean, my name was listed at one time for help and something, and in the course of saying, "Okay, what does that include?", well, way back when, you know, went and looked at some buildings and had somebody ask me, "Well, how are you qualified to determine if something needs to be?", you know?
Well.
I'm, I'm just saying, it's, I, there, there's no reason it has to be there, I mean, with council's approval, we can, we can do away with that, it's, it's obviously somewhat of a dinosaur.
Do that needs to be updated.
Well.
One of the two. I mean, if, if you want to make it, the.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, just with the way council has worked over the past number of years, folks show up and we deal with all the issues as a body. Uh, I mean, obviously, if there's something on there, you want to go rogue on, I'm not gonna get screeched.
Spearhead.
I, I'm just saying, I, I'm, I'm just giving you history.
I mean, that, you can break it down as to, this one goes, that's who, who's, I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it.
I know.
There, whoever's street, if you have issues, they would do the research on it, but, I mean, I'm just.
I, you guys decide what you want to do. Per, personally, I think we do.
It's the thought process.
I know, I, I think we do a good job of taking care of the whole, the whole smear. Uh, and if you guys look, think it's mundane and, and, you know, not required, we can do away with it too. Do you want to do streets?
Yeah.
Sewer? See, see what happens.
Well, I realize that, I don't even know where the sewer is in my own yard, so, there you go.
It's in your alley. Trust me.
See, she's on hell.
It's not your basement, right, right?
Well, that, yeah, you're on hell.
There you go, she, she knows all about the hell.
And, and, you know, in, in some ways, they're a liaison, if, if something were to happen, the, the responsibilities would be distributed amongst us individually, instead of.
I, I guess my thought would be is if, if someone came to one of the council members with a concern, do we want to be in a position where one council member would say, "Well, you need to go talk to that council member"? I, personally, I, my usual answer is, if you have a concern, come visit with the whole council.
Yeah.
I mean, I think.
Because we vote on decisions.
I think it's better served that way.
Yeah.
But there again, like, say if there's something you want to spearhead, I'm not gonna discourage you, I just.
But I know, like when we were redoing the park, you know, I was, I was on the park committee, and so, um, I worked with Rachel and, you know, I was the one that got all the plans for the playground equipment. And so, you know, I took it to the grade school, talked to a bunch of grade school kids, what do you want, and then, you know, that was just because, um, my contact with the school, and that's, you know, that's how that particular equipment was, was picked, but, um, otherwise, I, I believe that, I think our best decisions are made with multiple points of view.
No, I, when it gets down to, yeah, to the nitty-gritty, I think, yes.
And, you know, like I said, that's.
Compatibility.
Those are liaison positions.
All right, anything else? Last call. Need a motion to accept financials?
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion to accept financials is presented, seconded, any discussion? If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carried. Take a motion to.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks, for coming. Do what?
Get enough money off of, you know, the increase in the trash. An airport out here would sure be nice, all these other cities.
I'll bet you there's a grant somewhere, you could go. Red, you want to do that? You want to go check out a grant?
There you go, Grant.
What's he start calling you, Grant, Red? We need grants on this.
Need a grant, there you go.
Free money.
Free money.
Golly. Only till you get it.
We all know where that's.
That free money comes from somewhere.
We pay for it.
That's right, it's called T A X.
Sports connection is where we get all of our parking, soft, softball equipment, all of that.